So just remember your microphone buttons, that one in the middle there. Call the meeting to order and call the roll.
I'm gonna call the taxing body if you could state your name. Village of Orland Park.
Here Keith Pecow.
Orland School District 135.
Here Scott Peranik, Director of Finance.
Consolidated High School District 230.
Here John Lavelle.
Orland Park Public Library.
Here Mary Adamowski, Library Director.
Orland Fire Protection District.
Orland Township.
Here Diane Gork, Chief Financial Officer.
Moraine Valley Community College District. Is Mohammed here from Cook County? County is present and then a member at large.
Mike Ula White.
Mike Ula White is here.
Okay, can we get that audio so we can hear them? Okay, but they can be heard on the YouTube? Okay, so just so everyone knows that this is being broadcast on YouTube. So we'll start with an introduction of the Joint Review Board members. I don't think we really need to do that, we just all introduced ourselves, so we're good. And then we need to reconfirm the chairperson, so if someone could make a motion.
Orland 230, so moved.
Second 135.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So the Joint Review Board last met on November 27, 2023, and at that meeting, the village's staff informed the JRB members and the public of the village's intention to amend the existing Main Street TIF and establish a new TIF in the triangle bounded on the south by 143rd Street and on the sides of the triangle by LaGrange Road and Southwest Avenue, or Southwest Highway. The purpose of the meeting is to inform the Joint Review Board, after much consideration and monitoring of the staff's efforts to assure an optimal project, the village board has approved the zoning entitlements that will allow Edwards Realty to proceed with the project as generally presented at our November 27 meeting. After approval of the minutes, the village staff will make a video presentation about the details of the project, which will be followed by a brief explanation by one of the village attorneys of the zoning entitlement and the steps that will be taken by the village over the next two months before the developer may break ground. Both the JRB members and the public will then have an opportunity to comment on and ask questions about the project. So thank you all for coming today. So if I could, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the November 27, 2023 Joint Review Board meeting.
So move District 135.
Do I have a second?
Orland Park Public Library, second.
So moved by District 135 and seconded by Orland Park Public Library. And all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so the minutes are approved. And if we could present the video.
Work is well underway between the Village of Orland Park and Edwards Realty to finalize the details of downtown Orland Park with the goal of breaking ground sometime this fall. If you recall, in 2004, the Village of Orland Park undertook an ambitious effort to develop an area that meets the village's longstanding vision of creating a pedestrian-friendly downtown environment for Orland Park. Having invested approximately $150 million into the triangle in public-private partnerships, public investments, private investments, land acquisition, and roadway intersection improvements, the project remains incomplete. Seeking to finally bring home the village's longstanding vision for the area, at the May 2, 2022 Village Board meeting, the village board approved the conceptual master development plan for downtown Orland Park. Downtown Orland Park contains 9.15 acres of undeveloped land in the Main Street Triangle between 143rd Street and LaGrange Road. This area is currently a TIF district. What is a TIF? TIF, or Tax Increment Financing, is an economic development tool used to boost economic growth and create jobs by allowing developers to pursue developments that they normally wouldn't if they had to fund the projects on their own. TIF districts are created for three reasons. Number one, the local government does not have the funds needed to revitalize the property. Number two, developers are hesitant to invest because redevelopment costs would exceed property values. And number three, without action, the surrounding areas are at risk of decay and an eroding tax base. Once the TIF is approved, the annual property tax increases in the district are frozen at their current level. The increment above the frozen level is then used to pay off the financing over time. The development will increase the property value within the TIF district and, once completed, create additional tax revenue for the community. The additional retail sold from the real estate can increase the sales tax revenue from the community as well. For example, the current assessed value of all properties within the proposed downtown Orland Park TIF district is $0. When the TIF district expires in 23 years, the new assessed value of the property will be approximately $45 million. TIF doesn't pull money from schools or any other taxing body. All other taxing bodies are entitled to the tax revenue they were receiving before the creation of the TIF district. And schools and other taxing bodies will receive the benefit of the tax revenue after the TIF district expires. Without the TIF district, the assessed value of all properties within the proposed downtown Orland Park TIF district will remain $0. Remember, TIF is not a new tax. Now that that's out of the way, in order to continue development in and around the TIF district at the Main Street Triangle, the village must do two things. One, amend the existing TIF district boundary to include a subset of the parcels currently in the TIF district. And two, designate a new TIF district on some of the parcels currently in the TIF district. Since the May 2, 2022 Village Board meeting, the plans of downtown Orland Park have evolved to create a truly iconic and enjoyable experience, attracting some of Chicagoland's most desirable cafes, restaurants, and marketplaces. There will be over 140,000 square feet of new building space that will be used for retail, restaurant, entertainment, and other commercial uses. But most importantly, no new residential space will be built. Hero's Park will be the central hub to downtown Orland Park, designed to accommodate flexible outdoor activities, including farmers' markets, concerts, ice skating, and additional activities. The site will include a tribute to Hero's water feature and over 37,000 square feet of landscaping area with plenty of trees for shade and a plethora of lawn room for everyone to enjoy. The North Pond will be another beautiful feature for the development. Residents can overlook the water feature while enjoying the businesses of downtown Orland Park. This area will have a completed pedestrian connection to LaGrange Road for more access. Downtown Orland Park is seated right along a rail line with a Metro Commuter rail stop at 143rd Street. This considers the development a transit-oriented development. Transit-oriented developments, or TOD, create compact mixed-use developments near public transit to ensure people ease of access to jobs and other services. Some examples of other transit-oriented developments include Downers Grove, Park Ridge, LaGrange, and Arlington Heights. The current two options of the site plan for downtown Orland Park utilize over 1,450 total parking spaces for the development. According to an independent parking study done on July 16, 2024, this amount of total parking spots will exceed the required amount during peak projected times for parking needs in both site plan options. With the expansion of Hero's Park from the previous Crescent Park parcel, a traffic study needed to be done to determine how traffic would flow throughout the downtown Orland Park area. According to an independent study done on July 22, 2024, with the modifications to Crescent Circle Drive, Jefferson Avenue, an addition of a pickup and drop-off area on the north side of 142nd Street, and new access drives serving parcels A, B, and C, the intersections that provide access to downtown Orland Park will accommodate development-generated traffic without impacting internal intersection operations. In addition, the internal intersections within the site are projected to operate efficiently and will not impact the access intersection operations. The site will also continue to provide adequate accommodations for pedestrians. The total development cost of this project, including improvements, is approximately The TIF increment fund will fund approximately $33 million of this cost. Of that, about $10 million will be used for utility relocation and the construction of Hero's Park. Additionally, the village will be dividing up its bonds for financial security. As development reaches a set of standards, more money will be released. In order to ensure long-term maintenance of downtown Orland Park, the village will also establish a special service area for the entire property. Special service areas, or SSAs for short, are local tax districts that fund expanded services and programs through a localized property tax levy within that tax district. Revenue generated by the downtown Orland Park SSA could be used for a number of things, including the following. There are a lot of moving parts as part of this project. Here are some important upcoming dates. These dates are subject to change. Because of the importance of this project for the community, we want to hear from you. Before a TIF district is created, the redevelopment plan must be available for public review at least 45 days prior to the public hearing. The public hearing offers the community an opportunity to raise questions and voice their concerns about the proposed redevelopment. A registry of interested residents and organizations must also be created for each TIF, and a notice of important TIF activities shall be sent to those registered. For more information or to sign up for the TIF registry, please visit orlandpark.org/dtop.
And now we have S.B. Friedman here with some presentation slides for the TIF district.
Good morning, everyone. Okay, great. Talk closer, okay. Good morning, everyone. Happy to be here with you this morning. That was a great video that gave an amazing overview of the vision of the redevelopment of the Main Street Triangle area. I'm gonna get through the technical bits this morning of the amendment of the existing TIF district, and then we will talk a bit about the establishment of the downtown Orland Park TIF district. So we're gonna start with the amendment for the MST RPA. Want to go to the next slide? My name is Kaitlyn Johnson. I'm a vice president with S.B. Friedman. I'm here with my colleague Sam. We are a real estate and economic development consulting firm based in Chicago, and we have been working with the Village of Orland Park for many years, thinking about TIF district, how to use public-private partnerships to support development, providing development advisory services generally to the village. So the goal of this first presentation is to talk through the amendment to the existing Main Street Triangle RPA. RPA stands for Redevelopment Project Area. That is simply just the terminology for the TIF district as you know it. The TIF was established in 2004. There's been one prior amendment in 2007 to expand the boundary and make some minor changes to comply with updates to the TIF Act. And today we are talking about amendment number two. The goal of this amendment, as you saw in this video, was to reduce the size of the RPA to include just those parcels on the southeast corner. We also made some minor modifications to the land use maps and revised the budget to bring it up to current dollars using CPI. So on this slide, you can see an image of the revised boundary to the RPA. The original boundary, or I guess the amended boundary from 2007, included 16 parcels, 52 acres, and three buildings. The amended boundary as currently being proposed in this amendment includes only three parcels, 12 acres, and three primary structures. There's a little asterisk next to the primary structures because one important note is that the vacant retail space in the parking deck is being excluded from this TIF and will be put into the DOP TIF. We also made some minor land use, minor modifications to the land use maps here. Pretty straightforward. The future land use in the proposed area is still mixed use, commercial uses and residential uses. And as I mentioned, we also revised the budget to bring it up to $20,24. This represents an upper expenditure limit that could be used, could be funded with tax increment revenues. The budget as it's set is not saying that we will necessarily spend dollars on all of these different line items. Dollars can shift between them without amendment to the plan, either increasing or decreasing it, but this sets the upper limit. And the primary change from the previous budget of $54.5 million was just a CPI adjustment to bring it to the current dollars and the end of the life of the TIF. As was stated in that video, we are in the middle of the public approval process. The file was planned, or the plan was filed on June 10. Today, we are having the Joint Review Board meeting. The public hearing will be in early September on the 3, and the anticipated village board vote will happen two weeks after that on September 16. Any questions before we dive into the establishment of the downtown Orland Park RPA?
Any questions?
No questions? All right.
Go ahead.
So we will dive right into the next presentation, then. We can probably skip the first few slides because it's an overview of who I am, and I've already said that I'm Kaitlyn Johnson. So we'll get into the new boundary, and we'll start on slide four, if you don't mind. I'm not sure if the screen's being shared.
Whatever you see up there is being shared. What are you doing?
Great, so as we mentioned, parcels were removed from the MST RPA with the goal of establishing a new RPA for the triangle. This is now being referred to as the Proposed Downtown Orland Park Redevelopment Project Area, or DOP RPA. This new district includes 20 parcels encompassing 40 acres. One note here is that we have jumped the Southwest Highway to the west and included a few vacant parcels. That's the major distinction between the RPA and the previous MST boundary. We have a note here that there are 16 vacant development parcels and four infrastructure parcels. The four infrastructure parcels include the railroad way and stormwater detention. Those are excluded from the eligibility analysis. Development is not anticipated to occur on those parcels, so therefore, when you see in later slides as we talk through the eligibility, the denominator of the parcels that we're looking at will be the 16 vacant development parcels. We can go to the next slide. So I have several slides here. I'm gonna walk through the eligibility factors and the approach that we took to determine eligibility. We do conduct parcel-by-parcel field observations. We take pictures of all the parcels to review conditions on the properties. We also looked at EAV trends for the last six years. We evaluated permit data, recent private investment. We looked at a technical memo from SpaceCo related to flooding and runoff conditions. And we also reviewed the current comprehensive plan and the master development plan for the triangle. And we look at all of these factors, we analyze it, compile, and we map all of these factors to determine if we meet eligibility on a parcel-by-parcel basis and determine if the factors have been found meaningfully present reasonably distributed throughout the RPA. For vacant parcels which we have here, there are two pathways to establish eligibility. The first test is that you must find two of six possible factors, and you can see the factors listed there. There's another pathway that requires finding at least one of six possible factors be present meaningfully, to a meaningful extent, and reasonably distributed. We go to the next slide. You can see here that the vacant parcels qualify as a blighted area using both these one-factor and two-factor tests. On the two-factor test, we found obsolete plating and lack of growth at equalized value. On the one-factor test, we found that the area is subject to, subject to or contributes to chronic flooding in the area. And we'll walk through each of these factors. So the first factor in the two-factor test that we looked at was obsolete plating of vacant land, and this was found to be true in 12 of the 16 vacant development parcels. Conditions that we found were that parcels were a regular shape, that would make it an obstacle to attracting contemporary development. We did find this factor to be meaningfully present and reasonably distributed throughout the RPA. The second factor that we found as part of the two-factor test was the lack of growth at equalized value. The test here is that it grew less than the Consumer Price Index for at least three of the last five year-to-year periods, so those years are highlighted in the table there in orange. This factor is found to be present area-wide within the proposed RPA. And then finally, for the one-factor test, we did have a memo that was prepared by Spaceco, and they found that 100% of the parcels in the proposed RPA contribute to flooding within the McGuinness Low watershed. So therefore, we found that factor to be meaningfully present and reasonably distributed throughout the proposed RPA. There are also a number of tests and findings that we have to make as part of the designation process. The first of those tests is a historic lookback, that is, the lack of growth from private investment. We found this to be true. We have had no new construction activity on these vacant parcels, and the EAV growth has also been less than the Consumer Price Index as we just talked about. The next test is the... Index, as we just talked about. The next test is the but-for. Without the TIF designation, the RPA is not expected to be substantially developed without assistance. The other test I'll just quickly run through. We do have contiguous property within the RPA that is expected to benefit from the TIF. The proposed redevelopment plan promotes land uses that are consistent with the comp plan and the master development plan. Because there's no residential, we did not need a housing impact study. And the estimated dates of completion for the plan, if adopted in September, would be December 31st, 2048. Now, going into the components of the redevelopment plan itself, I won't get too much into the redevelopment objectives. Essentially, the goal of the TIF plan is support the vision and development of the master plan and the comprehensive plan, so supporting new construction, supporting public infrastructure, dealing with stormwater, improving landscaping, streetscaping, signage, and just generally able to help facilitate development as proposed. The proposed budget is $70 million. Again, this is the upper expenditure limit. You can, line item amounts can adjust up or down between these, and TIF funds can only be used on eligible costs as outlined here. The future land use map indicates that the proposed area is designated as mixed use. This supports the comp plan and the master development plan. The uses that are permitted include commercial, residential, civic, park, open space, community facilities, transportation, right-of-way, and then infrastructure detention. Again, this is the same public approval process as we have for the MST amendment. The plan was filed in June. Today, we have the Joint Review Board meeting. We'll have the public hearing and the village board vote in September. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I do have a question. Was there any study done by adding the parcel at Union Street and Southwest Highway, how that potentially could impact Park School? That's our, that's our major entrance way for our buses and our parents to drop off kids with it. I know you added it into the downtown--
That's the parcel just on the southwest.
Yes, due just west of the main spot.
We did not do any specific traffic studies or impact studies to see how--
So outside of the TIF, there is another project that's kicking off next year? Or is it 2026?
Right.
To redo the intersection?
Yeah, it kicks off next year.
So the project starts next year, which is the IDOT project along 143rd, which widens from Southwest Highway to West Avenue to five lanes and completely reconfigures the intersection at Union and Southwest Highway to one light. I don't know exactly how that configuration is, but it's all engineered and it's been studied. All the traffic studies are being done per IDOT, obviously, to redo that entire intersection. So that's all starting next year, so. And that should be completed, I believe, in '26 is the plan.
I think that's the plan.
Give it IDOT '27.
The, and as far as that actual parcel, there, there was previously an approval for multifamily, but that has fallen apart. So there are no, there's no real plan for that parcel right now. So there's nothing that's going to be built there that we, we are aware of. So there's no, can't do a traffic study on something. We don't know what's gonna, what's gonna actually happen there.
And the other thing you should be aware of with Park School is the, we swapped in the Nature Center, if anyone knows where that's at. That's the park that was built between Southwest Highway and La Grange, in that triangle piece there. We swapped that with the Forest Reserve, so the Forest Reserve's gonna take ownership of that January 1st. We're getting all of the permanent right-of-way, all the way down 143rd Street for, for the expansion between West Avenue and Wolf. Additionally, we got right-of-way to the west of Park School for the long-term plan for West Avenue to go to the back of Park School, so that students can be dropped off safely across the back instead of in that, that area with the, where it gets very congested. So that, so part of that swap was to actually get that right-of-way for the school's future use to be able to put a safer wave in for students. And that will be, it's all been approved by both taxing bodies, but it's, it's January 1st is when the swap actually occurs.
January 1st, we will have the, we'll have the right-of-way. So if the school wants to go ahead and extend that, that road to make a loop, you know, we're happy to transfer that right-of-way.
All right, that would have to be looked into with the board.
Absolutely.
Thank you for bringing that back.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, so I think all of those presentations covered all of the other agenda items here. Is there any public comment?
Mayor, if I could just, just a little bit about some next steps.
Okay.
The, so, the, as many of you may be aware, at the August 5th board meeting, the Plan Development Ordinance was approved. So as part of this whole process, it's important to stress that zoning entitlement is, is that no phase of the development will be permitted unless the village board has approved that phase after taking public comment on the phase. Also, if any phase substantially differs from the concept plan, then the phase must go through the entire Plan Commission public hearing process again. Also wanted to stress that the RDA, the redevelopment agreement, will be the final step in the entitlement process in which the approval, the RDA, will give the village board both a contractual and legislative right to enforce the terms of the entitlement. So we saw the timeline that was spelled out there. And as part of that timeline, there will be a public hearing on the establishment of the TIFs and the business district on September 3rd. And then the TIF and business district establishment ordinances will be on the agenda for adoption on September 16th, and the RDA will, is on, will be on the board for adoption on October 7th. So October 7th will be the final step in this development process.
And I guess the one, the comments that I would make is that, you know, this was established in '04, well before any of us. And a lot of, if you look, I mean, it's easy, hindsight's always 20/20, but I think generally speaking for TIFs, using TIFs to spend, you know, almost seven years to acquire land wastes all the time that you have to make a TIF actually beneficial. So that wasn't a very good idea. And then also putting a non-for-profit in a TIF is also not the best idea. And that's again before any of, any of us here in the village, for sure, and probably before most of you. So, so what was important with this new TIF, because it, the project's not gonna be developed any other way, was important for the board is that, that we didn't add more residential. We think there's enough residential down there, which I think is a, you know, huge benefit for the schools to not have any residential in there anymore. And the other thing is, we felt it was really important that this was, this, this project benefits all of Orland Park residents, not just the people who live at 143rd and La Grange. So we want to build something that, hey, that people want to come to and enjoy. So the restaurant area, the walkable area, it's not a really big area. It's not, you know, four, three blocks by three blocks. It's very small, less than a block by a block. But what we have there, I think what, what's being presented there is, is good. It was also important for us is that any incentives that were being generated are being generated from inside the district. So whether it's a TIF, whether it's a sales tax incentive, it's being generated from inside there. It's not being subsidized by other parts of the village, you know, so, and other parts of our revenue sources. So that was pretty important for us. And this meets all of those. And the other good thing is, it's, it's a plan that's ready to go. So unlike in the past where nothing was even built there until 10 years into the TIF, you'll actually, will actually, hopefully, by two to four years in, it should be complete in generating all of that increment. So, so we won't see that problem that we've had with, with the previous TIF. And with that, open up any other questions you guys might have?
Yeah, I know our, our Board of Education is gonna have, you know, some questions that, I hope I'll be able to answer. I, you know, this provided a lot of information. It looks like an exciting project, and we, we do appreciate, you know, the consideration of the school districts with the residential piece, because that can, that can be difficult to navigate. But the original, I, I know the presentation showed that the original is like $150 million of public and private investment. I think we got an audit statement or whatever, the, you know, the last meeting that said there was like $16 million, I think, or something like that outstanding debt that still owed--
I think it's about 30.
Is it like 30?
Yeah, it might be a little less because some of it's been paid down, so it might be 28 or 27, but it's, it's 30 million.
And I, I think that audit that we received the last time was, you know, was out of date. Is there an updated, is there a more--
When's the '22?
Yeah, so '22 will be, it's, it's planned to be approved. The, I believe it's the first meeting in October. The challenge we had there is we had a, a previous auditing firm who initially did, who had no problems. They were merged or bought out, and they, and then they had staffing issues. The whole accounting world has staffing issues, but this just made that even worse. It, they delivered our '21 late. As soon as that happened, the board terminated their contract. We went and did a competitive RFP to bring on a new auditing firm, and it was worded to Sickich. And if anybody, everybody knows Sickich is a very reputable auditing firm. So their first draft is gonna be delivered here shortly. And like I said, it's anticipated that the first meeting in October, it will be on for formal approval.
Yeah, and I'll add to that. So in '21, we knew it was late. We, the board had a problem with it, but at the same time, it's, they're under contract. So we made sure we got that first, that '21 done because it was so far down the path. Then at that point, we, we terminated the contract. And they also tried to hold us hostage for work product for '22 that they'd already done. They wouldn't give it to us. The board said, there's no way. We're paying them more money. We'll recreate it if we have to, which has taken the process a little longer, but frankly, we don't trust that audit firm since the merger. And so it took us almost 18 months, I think, to break the contract. But that's, and, you know, obviously, it's a pretty big deal for us, but we had to, we had to deal with the issue in front of us. And they'd always been a good firm prior to that, but they, they merged and basically, they didn't deliver. So Sickich has been working to recreate all of the stuff that was created by us that, that they refused to give us and wanted us to pay them more money, extra money outside of the contract for. So we said no, and so they're recreating it. And I think there's a draft coming shortly.
Yep.
And then whatever gets changed out of that. So, so that will be approved in October. I don't think, there's no substantial changes to anything that we've done or any of that, but just getting it done. And then 2023 should be done by the end of, end of the year, Chris? Okay, great.
And so with that, I mean, whatever that shows is outstanding. What, what's happening to that debt? That's just being taken--
The village is just--
By the village.
Yeah, the village is just eating that debt, so.
It's not being, it's not being paid for with the increment of the new, the new--
No, the new TIF is not being used at all for that. The, the current TIF has a few, what, three more years left in it, and that, whatever is generated from that from '97, '50 is being used to pay down whatever's there. But whatever's left is probably about $25 million. It's, it's on the village's books, and we're just gonna have to eat it. That's just unfortunately, it's probably more than that, but what's actually in the TIF fund is 25 million. But if you go back to, a lot of money was spent out of capital funds and other things that weren't even included in that TIF.
And I, I know you guys have done some creative things, you know, we've worked with you on those in the past. And I, I know this will be a question, so I'm just gonna ask it, but before, you know, renewing another TIF and tying up this spot for, you know, their 23 years, what other things were, you know, were explored? What other kind of--
You know, as S.B. Friedman said, there's just, there's nothing else. I mean, we went out, I, I can't speak to everything the previous board did. I can speak to what we've done. And when I, when I arrived, there was a, there was a, a deal on the table with a, with a, a movie theater. And they, they were giving them eight million, they're just giving them $8 million to come. And I said, if they're not signing on the dotted line with $8 million on the table, they're never coming. And as, as you recall, AMC submitted for, for the mall. AMC actually committed and actually started the work until COVID hit, and then they backed out. So the other group never, and they had, they literally had months, almost a year, where they could have, they could have taken that $8 million, and they never did. So, and that, that group, by the way, had 12 theaters in the U.S., and they went bankrupt during COVID. So, so that was one thing that was on the table when I got here. Once that fell apart, we went out for an RFP, and we wanted to develop the whole piece of property, not just part of it. It didn't necessarily include a TIF, so we asked for people to come with their, their best proposals. Only two of this, I think there were seven in total. Ed could probably correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there were seven. And there were two that actually had plans for the entire piece. Others were, wanted one piece and one piece. I'm like, no, we want something comprehensive. The board chose on a vote of five to two to go with a different structured development for their proposed plan, which by the way, had a lot of residential in it. I think myself and Jim Dodge were the two opponents to that particular one. They dragged their heels for quite a long time. And essentially, they were asked, are you, you know, then COVID hit, and it's like, are you in or are you out, basically, is what the board asked them. You need to make a commitment. We gave them, I think, 60 days or whatever to make a decision of whether they were gonna continue or not, because they kind of went dark. And they decided they were pulling out. So we went back to Edwards, who was the other person who submitted, and we asked them if they would still be interested since they did submit for the first RFP. And they were interested, but they said, based on the market and based on what's happened, we're gonna have to redevelop our plan. By the way, their previous plan was much bigger and would have been much more TIF, much more incentives, which would have required a TIF, so it was much, much bigger. And so they redeveloped it based on the marketplace. And then the board, because of the TIF, because there's a potential TIF involved here, and they're already in a TIF, we had to go out to the public to see if anyone wanted to submit a proposal as well. I think one, Flare and Collins wanted to do all residential, 100% residential. We told them no. Oh, by the way, this was all delayed a little bit because Flare and Collins had a right of first refusal, so we had to wait for that to expire. So, but things were working in the background. So no one else came up with anything that was worthwhile, so then we moved forward with Edwards. And so this is their, their market-based plan, and it basically requires a, requires, you know, incentive help from, from the village. The first one was structured, I think it required some, but was gonna be done within the current TIF or maybe extending the current TIF. But they never actually brought anything, any, they never brought anything down their initial concept to us.
This site, the whole site is owned, it's owned by Orland Park, right?
Correct. Except for that one piece, right? The, the piece to the north of, or to the west of Southwest Highway that's being added, that is not owned by us. There was a project that was approved, as George said, that was a multifamily project. That has expired. And at the time, the reason we approved that is because we were getting some, we're getting some concessions from them that we're, we're going to make it worth putting multifamily in there. It was, thinks it was 60 condo units. And the village doesn't support that anymore, so. And they, and they, they can't make the math work either on it anymore, so. But it's being included because I know Edward, we know that Edwards is in discussion, and we're trying to make that a part of the whole, whole project.
And just to maybe reiterate, we, we looked at all of the financing options here, and that's why, and as the mayor said, this is going to be a self-supporting project. The, the TIF increment, the business district, generated, and any type of sales tax incentives are what's gonna fund what's happening there. There will no be, there, there's no plans for any general fund usage for this. Oh, and the SSA as well. So the SSA will help with the maintenance. So when you look at all of the incentives that are available, that's really what we have in our toolbox. The other option, as the mayor said, is if we wanted to, that whole thing could be filled with residential. with residential. That would be the one project that would, that would be the one project that would not need incentives. And, and that's.
And we have no interest in that.
And the board has been.
Sure, you have no interest in that either.
The board has been 100% clear that there's no more residential that's to go in there, and that's why the RDA that is planned with Edwards Realty includes a very strict stipulation that there is no residential.
Yeah, and, you know, we've worked, we looked at it a lot of different ways, and one of the things we're doing too that was not done in the previous TIF, you know, again, we have the benefit of learning from the mistakes of the past, is if the, any, any financing that we do, any loans that we do, we've got them phased in over time, so if something happens in the marketplace that the project, you know, stops or slows, we don't have, like we have currently, one of the struggles that we've had developing that is they put all the infrastructure in. And so they don't have, no one that comes in has a blank slate. They're working with streets that are already there, and it makes it a lot more challenging for them. So we're making sure that we're not getting so far down the path that if, you know, there has to be a course correction, we can't make that course correction. And that's what happened in the past, they put that 150 million in to do all of that, and really, there was no plan around it. And even worse, as we have found out, they ran infrastructure through the middle of some of those parcels, and I think any of us know, we don't have to know a lot about construction to know that utilities and stuff run along the hedges of properties, not right down the middle. And so we're spending, what, two and a half, $3 million just to move utilities that were done previously through those parcels.
Any other questions? No questions? Okay, great. Well, then I'll entertain a motion to recommend to the village board the establishment of the DOP TIF and the amended MST TIF as presented. Anybody?
I make a motion, 135, District 135.
Do I hear a second?
District 230, second.
Call, uh, we'll call a roll on this one, yeah.
Village of Orland Park.
Aye.
Orland School District 135.
Abstain.
Consolidated High School District 230.
Abstain.
Orland Park Public Library. Orland Township.
Yes.
Cook County.
Mohammed said yes.
Cook County was aye.
Aye, okay. And then the member-at-large? That was a yes.
He said yes. So the motion passes five to two, and we will push that to the village board. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second, 135.
Motion by District 230, second by 135. All in favor? Aye. All opposed, signified by saying nay? We're adjourned. Thank you very much.